Good evening. I call to order this meeting of the Gladstone Urban Renewal Agency, which will be followed by a city council work session on Tuesday, March 26, 2024. It's 5:30 PM. The City of Gladstone is abiding my guidelines set forth in House Bill 2560, which requires the governing body of the public body, to the extent reasonably possible, to make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide opportunity for members of the general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony during meetings, to the extent in-person oral and written testimony is allowed. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public, both in person and virtually using Zoom platform. The Zoom instructions are on the agenda to the meeting. Because it's a work session, the latter part of the meeting is a work session. There will be no public comment during that portion of the meeting. Tammy, will you call the role, please?
Counselor Huckabee.
Present.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Riechel.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Roberts.
Present.
Counselor Garlington. Mayor Milch.
Present. Please stand for the flag salute. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we only have one item on the agenda for the Urban Renewal Agency meeting, and that is just a general report, a preliminary analysis of our Urban Renewal Agency with some recommendations that we might consider in the future. So staff, will you present that for us, please?
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. Going to give you just a little bit of background that's in your staff report to set the stage for tonight. The Gladstone Urban Renewal Agency was formed to plan, direct, and manage certain projects within Gladstone. Pursuant to ORS 457055, the City Council has been appointed the governing body of the agency. The Urban Renewal Plan for Gladstone Urban Renewal Area was originally approved by the Gladstone City Council on March 13, 1990, by ordinance number 1129. Since its original adoption, it has been amended 23 times, and there is no sunset. That's a lot of amendments for an urban renewal district. The City of Gladstone adopted a goal of economic development, specifically to have a robust economic system support, maintain, and grow all businesses, and revitalize to make Gladstone's downtown an inviting place. One objective is to explore urban renewal refinement opportunities. So tonight, you're going to hear from Elaine Howard of Elaine Howard Consulting LLC and John Southgate Consulting to talk about what the Urban Renewal Preliminary Analysis found. At the end of this discussion, we will be asking a consensus from the City Council on options that are outlined in the staff report. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Elaine. Elaine, you're muted.
Elaine, you'll need to unmute. Thank you.
Sorry, I did it, and it didn't want to mind. I've had three grandchildren here today. Maybe it's just taking a clue from them. Would you like me to share my PowerPoint, or do you have the PowerPoint ready to share?
I do have the PowerPoint if you want me to share.
That would be great.
Okay.
So what I am doing tonight is giving you some background on some preliminary feasibility work that we have been working on with the, your staff, to look at potential amendments in the future to the Gladstone Urban Renewal Plan. So it is, this says financial update, but it is a financial update, an update of a potential boundary change, a potential substantial amendment. And then I think John Southgate would like to talk a little bit about the kinds of programs or things that you would do if you decided to undertake a substantial amendment. Next slide, please. The first thing we did was look at your existing maximum indebtedness. Maximum indebtedness is the total amount of money that you may spend on projects, programs, and administration over the life of an urban renewal plan. Your maximum indebtedness is $23,589,427, and the maximum indebtedness amount used through fiscal year end 2023 was $20,250,879. You have a maximum indebtedness remaining of $3,338,548. Of that, you actually, you have two long-term debts. You have one called Fund 390, which will be paid off in fiscal year end 2027, and you have another Fund 100, which will be paid off in fiscal year end 2030. If you continue, just as you are, without any amendments, you are projected to reach your maximum indebtedness in fiscal year end 2025, so next year. Next slide, please. Urban renewal agencies and their city councils, the city council has to take the action, are allowed to increase the maximum indebtedness on their own to a certain formulaic amount. That amount takes your original maximum indebtedness of a little over $23 million and adjusts it for inflation each year, and then takes 20% of that amount, which is approximately $7 million. If you decided to amend your maximum indebtedness to increase it, it would increase it by that $7 million amount to a new maximum indebtedness, if amended, of $30,725,651.98. I don't know why it goes down to dollars and cents. The only way you can increase your maximum indebtedness is through a substantial amendment to the Urban Renewal Plan, and a substantial amendment is amendment that goes through the exact same process as the original plan did. So you have to take it to your agency. You have to send it out for review by all of the taxing districts. You have to take it to your planning commission for review of conformance to your comprehensive plan, and then to your city council for a hearing on a non-emergency ordinance, and that hearing is advertised citywide. The city council may increase the maximum indebtedness by this amount on their own. They do have to consider comments by other taxing districts if any of them have comments to make or don't want you to increase it. You have to consider those comments, but you still may make that increase on your own without needing the vote of any of the other taxing districts. Next slide. In terms of the consideration of the potential amendment, we looked at potential boundary expansion that might happen at the same time if you decided to move ahead. In doing that, we had to look at the statutory restrictions on boundary increases. You may add 20% of your original acreage. That's a maximum amount. You may never add more than that. So you may add over the lifetime of your plan 56.9 acres of property and right-of-way. You have previous additions of about, I don't know if this one got updated.
It should be updated.
Yes, it is. Thank you. 29.21 acres. And thank you, Mayor, for reminding us that there was an addition in 2016. So you had a remaining capacity of 27.69 acres. The potential addition, which we'll talk about on the next slide, is 21.5 acres, which would still allow you future capacity for adding to the area of 6.19 acres. To do this kind of an amendment to add boundary, it is also a substantial amendment. So if you wanted to, you could compare, combine both the increase in the maximum indebtedness and the expansion of the boundary into one substantial amendment. Next slide. This amendment would be to add the property shown in yellow, which is most of your downtown area, which wasn't included in the original urban renewal plan. So it includes those properties, basically adjacent to Portland Avenue, that would help improve your entire downtown area and your ability to do projects within that area. And again, we'll let John talk about potential projects as I get to the end of this financial information. So this potential boundary expansion does fit within the limitations of the statute. So you could do that and move ahead if you decided you wanted to. Next slide. Tyvarious Solutions completed the financial update for the area just to look at how long it would take to reach that new maximum indebtedness if you decided to reach it, and again, how long your plan would be in effect if you didn't increase the maximum indebtedness. They made certain assessed value, that's what the AV stands for, growth assumptions in making that analysis. So the first is just a general appreciation of the assessed value of 3% annual growth. That is the amount that the assessor is allowed to increase our assessed value every year, and unless we're in a deep recession, that typically happens. And then there were specific assumptions for some new construction to happen within that boundary area that would be mixed-use development in the future. We did kind of, again, according to a set formula of a type, a prototype of a construction product, where the total improvement cost, real market value, would be about $20 million. This first one would have a certificate of occupancy in 2028 and come on the tax rolls in year fiscal year end 2030, and also assuming that 75% of the value of that would receive a 10-year vertical housing development zone abatement. So we looked at that first one, and then we looked at other potential products like this coming on every five years. And that, those would continue going on from the certificate of occupancy of 2028 for five years, but then hopefully even after the urban renewal area expires, it would be assuming that these tools that we are putting in place would help cause other new development to happen within that area. Next slide. This just shows a graph of what the TIF, which is Tax Increment Finance Forecast, might be. The light blue on the bottom is what's called the frozen base. That's the value on which all of your taxing districts receive their share of the property taxes that are paid. You can see in the year 2024 at the bottom that that's a flat line across. That would only go up if you had a planned amendment and you added those additional properties, which would increase your frozen base assessed value. That then also makes the grayish line above that go up because incrementally, you've increased your frozen base, but you've also then increased the properties upon which you'll get that 3% in increase in assessed value and new construction within the area. If you decide to do a substantial amendment, it puts you in the position of having to do revenue sharing. Revenue sharing is relatively new to the statute, and it occurs in all new urban renewal plans. But for an existing urban renewal plan, it only comes into effect if you do a substantial amendment to the plan. This forecasts that you would have to start doing revenue sharing in fiscal year end 2032. And what that would mean is you would share a portion of those tax increment proceeds at that time with all of the other taxing districts until the district, until your urban renewal district ends. It's projected that if you increase the maximum indebtedness, increase the boundary, and had the development that we are projecting, that this tax increment area would end in 2033. And at that point, you can see that blue line goes up to a big bar because all of the taxing districts would then get that increased property tax revenue that would be shared proportionately with all of the different taxing districts. Next slide. This just shows the amount of funding capacity that you would have for projects in the urban renewal area. $6 million of that would come from the potential amendment. If you don't amend it, you would have about $3.3 million left to do projects within the area. The bar that goes up from 2024 shows the debt service in the dark gray, and then again, that blue color is the amount of money you would have for projects. So in that first year, 2024, because you have a beginning fund balance of about $3 million, and you have tax increment income from the assessor's office at about $1 million, you would have a little over $3.3 million to spend on projects that year. Those, that black bar keeps going across until your existing long-term debt gets paid off in 2030. And any revenues that you would get, annual revenues after that, could also be spent on projects within the area. And you see that in years 2030, 31, 32, and then a small portion in 2033. Most of your funds would be spent on doing projects. In 2033, that bar is low because you're projected to reach your maximum indebtedness that year. So you would not take the full amount of tax increment proceeds. You would only take a portion of them. You don't have to spend all of that money on projects in 2024. So this is just showing capacity. And that capacity can go out and be spread out over any of those years as you go along. But we all know, given what inflation is, the longer you wait to spend money that you have in your beginning fund balance and within your capacity, the less you'll be able to buy because of the impact on inflation on your funding. Next slide. If you did increase your maximum indebtedness, it would prolong the taxing district's impacts. So this chart is large and has a lot of numbers on it, but it shows you, if you don't do an amendment, the total amount of impacts to taxing districts that you would have through the life of the area. And again, with no amendment, you would probably only have those impacts through fiscal year end 2025. If you did an amendment, it would be through 2033, and those impacts go up. So this shows you in the different columns, the no amendment amount, if you didn't increase your maximum indebtedness, the amount of impact if you did, and what the actual impact of that amendment would be. So for the City of Gladstone itself, with no amendment, you have about $1.8 million of impact between now and when the urban renewal area would terminate. If you did the amendment to increase the maximum indebtedness, it would be about $4.3 million. So the impact of the amendment would be $2.5 million. We have done that for each of the different taxing districts. And on those that have zeros, it is because there are just a couple of properties within this area that are within those service districts, and the impacts are under $1,000 projected for those. So that is the end of what the PowerPoint is. I have a couple of other things to say, and then I know John wants to talk. So you could stop the sharing unless anybody wants to go back to any of the slides. So I was asked to give you an idea of the cost of a substantial amendment, and the cost, and that was in the memorandum that was in your packet. So a cost of a substantial amendment is between $35,000 and $45,000, and it really depends on how much public input you want to do, so that $10,000 includes a lot of public input in your community. The reason it costs so much is we have to redo all of the blight findings, all of the requirements of the original plan and original report, and take it to all those steps that I mentioned earlier in the presentation. The agency planning commission present to the county, send information to all the taxing districts, and then to the city council. A timeline for undertaking this amendment would be between six months and a little longer if you do more public input. So that is, I think in the, we can talk about at the end what the potential next steps might be, but I'd like to then move to Mr. Southgate for him to talk a little bit about, if you decided to move ahead, what types of things he envisions you could do as projects within the area.
All right. John, if you wouldn't mind holding off for just a minute. I think because most of us are very new to this and have a lot of questions, I'm going to anticipate some of the questions, try to get a little bit more of a basic understanding of what urban renewal is, and so we have a clearer understanding of what we're talking about. First of all, you use the term indebtedness. Whenever we see something with the words "in debt" in it, it sounds like we owe money to someone. What does that term really mean? Does it really mean an increase in available revenue for us to use? And can you, can you put it into, get kind of translated into a different way of understanding so we can see it in a better sense?
That's a great question. So I'll do it in two steps. So maximum indebtedness was established a long time ago. In your plan, it was after your plan was adopted. But maximum indebtedness is the total amount of money you have to spend. That word indebtedness has varied over the life of urban renewal in Oregon. It used to mean that every dollar you spent had to be from some kind of, and it used to be understood that was a long-term debt instrument, so a bond or a loan, and that that was the only way you could spend your urban renewal money. So the maximum indebtedness meant that when you received your money from the assessor, you had to enter into some kind of debt agreement to be able to then spend that money. Over the years, as interpretations have changed, legal counsel now tells us, and I'm not a lawyer, but legal counsel now tells us that you don't have to do that through a long-term debt like a bond or a loan, but you can do that through something called contract debt, where you have an agreement with a developer, or an agreement with a builder, or an agreement with a construction company, or in my case, an agreement with a consultant that is a debt instrument. It is an agreement to pay, and that you can spend your tax increment proceeds through that instead of having to incur that long-term debt that has costs to it. You have to pay the interest costs. You have to pay for bond counsel or legal counsel to set up all those loan documents. So in your case, what we're looking at is that you wouldn't undertake another loan debt for your area, but you would pay off your existing money, and then you would just use what's called that pay-as-you-go, which is entering into contracts for expending that future amount of money that comes in. And those contracts are called debt.
Okay, that's very helpful. That really cleared it up for me. Now, a second question I have is, you had a chart that had some black stripes across the bottom and then blue above it.
Yes.
And you mentioned that there were some, there was some actual loans that, I'm going to use the term loan, something that we're paying off now that will be paid in a few years. I think that relates to the additional acreage that we added in 2016, which was for the building that we're sitting in right now, our city hall and civic center upgrades. We used urban renewal funds for that. And so you're saying that in order to finish paying the costs of these buildings, that will take us a few more years. That was the black stripe at the bottom of that chart.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Let me ask if there are other counselors who have questions to have a better understanding of how this works or what these numbers or terms refer to. Counselor Cook.
I have many questions, but I suspect that they will be answered as we go, so I'll hold them until the end.
All right, very good. Anybody else? Anything you could, you said you marked up. Did we, did we get, is it clear? Okay.
See what he.
All right, all right. Now, you've given us an indication that were we to make this amendment and get this increase in our maximum indebtedness, we would have some funds available to invest in our community in the area that we're talking about, perhaps expanding the boundaries. So that brings us to John Southgate. And John, let us know your thoughts and why you've made certain assumptions about some, some investment in our, in our city that we might be able to make over the next decade.
Sure. And actually, I'll start by also talking a little bit about fundamentally what urban rule is about. And Elaine covered this in her memo, but I just want to stress, urban renewal in Oregon, really around the country over the decades, has been about taking an area that I'll say is underperforming, either because of underutilized property or lack of essential infrastructure or any other combination of reasons that makes an area something less than it could be in terms of jobs, development, the tax revenues that it generates. And with the investment of the tax increment, the money that comes out of urban rule that Elaine just explained, use those funds to help spur and stimulate private investment that will, over time, pay for itself, because that's, that's a new increment. Those revenues are used then to upgrade an area to make it also really take off. That's not an official technical term, but, so whether it's Ron Lurakers in Hillsborough, which was a massive, John knows about this, Intel's massive investment, that was done through urban rule, through a partnership between the city and Intel. The Pearl District Interstate, around the country, there's, around the country, around the state, there's about 40 or 50 communities that use this tool to help upgrade their area, whether it's small towns or large cities. It's, to me, an essential tool to help make an area more successful economically, amount of investment, public infrastructure, parks, streets, et cetera. I don't want to pass over that point, because when Jackie asked me to come in to help the city about six years ago, the city had a recently, at that time, recently adopted downtown revitalization plan, 2017. Your predecessors, I don't think any of you were on the city council at the time, I could be wrong, adopted this plan that called for downtown Gladstone taking off. Making that happen, it takes a lot of time and money, and there it doesn't just turn around overnight. The first thing that Jackie, a little bit of history here, that Jackie had me do was to talk to developers who had done projects in some of your sibling communities like Oregon City, Milwaukee, et cetera. Asked them, what would it take for you to invest in Gladstone? And the happy news was that, I think, to a person, these developers, whether it's nonprofit affordable housing developers or for-profit mixed-use market rate developers, they were all interested in Gladstone, but said, there's several things that need to happen. And really, those things were embodied in that downtown revitalization plan, which if you haven't read it, it's worth going back and taking a look at, at seeing what was envisioned at the time. I recommend it. They said things like, you need to fix your zoning, which was called for in the downtown plan. You fixed your zoning a couple of years ago. That was a momentous thing. The zoning now allows medium-density mixed-use development, ground floor retail up to the street with housing above, serving a variety of incomes. You need to put, add this area to your urban rule district because that creates funding sources that the city brings to the table to help spur private redevelopment. I'll go into the, in a little more detail in a moment. But also, they focused on, gosh, this is exciting to think of Portland Avenue becoming a multimodal street where it's a pleasant pedestrian environment, while still allowing cars, of course, and then building, rebuilding the bridge. Those are not simple propositions, but I think urban rule is a tool that can help. Those are not simple propositions, but I think urban rule is a tool that can help as part of your local match in securing other outside dollars possibly. Um, what would you do with urban rule funds? In my experience, and I think it will apply here, if and when you formally modify the urban plan to expand the, the maximum indebtedness and expand the boundary, it will allow for a variety of programs. Some are, are relatively modest scale. Um, storefront grant program, uh tenant improvement grants, pre-development grant programs, and I could go deep into the weeds, and I'm looking at Sarah because she knows I'm working on this uh effort in a sister city to the slight north. We could talk about that. Those are things that um uh urban dollars contribute to a richer street life, bringing a, a vacant or underutilized storefront to uh bring it up to a more uh a, a use that makes downtown Gladstone more attractive, bringing in more restaurants, you know, a, a wine shop. Uh, uh, businesses, uh maybe a bookstore. Although there's a very good one to the north, so you don't need a bookstore. Um. Those are relatively small-scale programs, grant programs, it's up to you, they could be fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, fifty thousand dollar grant programs. Often, as is the case in what, what Milwaukee's considering, they're matching grants. So a shopkeeper has to pay half of the cost and then urban rule dollars pay the balance. These dollars can also be used for larger-scale investments, whether it's to pay for um major improvements to the public driveway to Portland Avenue and/or to the, the bridge, the, it's reconstruction, if you decide to, to do that. Uh, they could be used for land acquisition and, and I'm a large, a big advocate for that because if you control this site here or that site there, you control its, its fate. Uh, otherwise, there's a risk that it'll be something that, that falls far short of what you would like to see there. Um, it could be used for uh gap financing where uh the difference between um the financing and equity that a developer could raise and the actual cost of construction, there's a gap. Th- that's a, that's a more aggressive use of urban renewal, but sometimes that, that gap investment helps make a project feasible. And ultimately, over time, it'll pay for itself because that, that project, if it's a private development, will generate the tax increment that will help over time pay for itself. I hope that's, that's clear. Um, so I'm, you probably could detect there's, I have a lot of excitement and energy about this because to me, urban rule is, is a critically important tool for your efforts to revitalize downtown Gladstone. And I, I'll be really blunt, without it, it's going to be a lot harder. You've hired uh a remarkable, I'll say young woman because she's a lot younger than me, but Marcy is, is doing great work. People are noticing what she's doing, what you collectively are doing through her to help spur more business investment, to make Gladstone a more business-friendly environment. I mean, I, I get her emails from the announcements about an event or something like that. It's just, it's so exciting that you finally have a dedicated staff working on this. If you give her the urban rule funding, she's going to be able to do even more. And so I am excited. I think, I, I, I had a uh met with a couple of colleagues from um Tigard and Washington County and talked about Gladstone and, you know, they see what's happening in Milwaukee. They see that things are heading this way in terms of redevelopment. So I think you're in a great position. Urban rule is going to help you bring something serious to the table to make a, a great city have a great downtown. I'll stop there.
Thank you, John. That's very helpful. Uh, you know, I, I was on planning commission for a number of years and, and had got the, had the benefit of hearing from you on these issues then. And it was always exciting to hear that when you talk directly to developers, they see the potential of Gladstone. Uh, it wasn't something where they were saying, oh, we'll never go there. Uh, they, they knew that this is potentially, and, and you look, uh, you know, a new bookstore. We're, we're getting a Trader Joe's up the street uh in, in Oak Grove. Uh, you know, those things add value to the property, uh, make, that make this more attractive place to live. And if these things were right in our own city, uh, uh, well, we don't have a big enough uh plot or a big enough building to put a Trader Joe's in Gladstone. But the idea is that the more of these things that really people want to have close by and uh, you know, are destinations that they choose to go, uh, the better the economic opportunities are going to be for people and the value of living here. Uh, and, and so we've prioritized livability, we've prioritized economic development. Uh, this seems to be a tool that can help uh achieve both of those. All right, um, are there other questions uh for John from members of the council?
I think just some clarity on what um increasing the maximum indebtedness would mean. So I think just to be clear, you know, and, and obviously we're not making this decision tonight. This is just the beginning of the process. Um, but by increasing the maximum indebtedness, we're not committing to spend, spending those funds. We're just kind of laying the groundwork so that in the future, a future council could consider projects like the ones that you're talking about, right?
Yes, thi- this authorizes, this gives you this fund, but you, you decide to, really through your annual budget process, like, okay, this is the year we want to do XYZ to Portland Avenue or this year we want to, Marcy's telling us that she's hearing from property owners or business owners that they really need this particular tool. You make that decision in that budget year. All right, this year we have X to spend from urban rule. How do we want to divvy it up? It's an annual decision.
Counselor Hook.
Thank you. Um, so I'm thinking if there were more members of the community here hearing land acquisition and viewing this map and seeing their homes on it, that's going to be alarming to them. Um, so what can you say that would put their minds ease that we're not planning on coming and snatching up their homes?
That's a great question. Um, and the good news is that um by law, um, a city and, and Elaine can certainly jump in. But by law, a city, in the old days, I'll say the bad old days of urban renewal around the country, urban rule is a tool uh often targeted at, to traditionally underrepresented communities to buy a property, to force the sale, whether you want to sell or not. In Oregon, you can't do that. You could use that uh forced sale eminent domain condemnation for a public work such, you know, for a park or something like that, but you can't use it for private redevelopment. If I own a home in this, in the existing or the expanded urban renewal area, I could keep in that home regardless of the zoning and even if the city ha- has aspirations for higher density development, no one can force you to sell. Um, I will say, may, and, and Elaine, tell me if this is incorrect, but I think generally as urban rule funds help to upgrade an area, the value of property um is going to appreciate, I believe, more than typically. In fact, one of the challenges that you may face someday is if it's so successful that it results in gentrification. So I'm a low-income renter and this area is now taking off and so the rent is going up or the price of buying a home is going up. Urban will create funding tools uh to help address that challenge. But um uh I think as a general rule, it's going to enhance the value of your property without forcing you to do anything if you don't want. And Elaine, please weigh in.
Yeah, um, thank, thank you. So John is right. We as uh voters in Oregon voted that uh eminent domain could not be used to buy my property from me and then turn around and sell it to John. So that, that is just not allowed in Oregon. It's only allowed for a public purpose. If someone owns property within the urban renewal area, potential boundary addition, yes, their real market value might go up, but the value upon which they pay taxes, the assessed value, will not go up above that three percent per year. So it, it won't cause that amount of economic or that kind of economic dislocation, but it could have impact on people, um, like John said, paying rent where rents might go up if a lot of development happens within that area or people, so that's in a residential or people um business lease rates might go up if you have a lot of new development in the area. And so if, if that is something that is potentially going to happen, at the same time you do an amendment, you could talk about relocation and you can ca- talk about um assistance to people who are displaced or assistance to businesses that might get displaced if uh to offset those, those impacts of increased new development within the community.
Couple of comments I'd like to make too, because the city of Gladstone is not interested in dislocating people. A couple of instances where I can say we control our own destiny is we owned the old library site property. That is an example that John can give um of what we could potentially do with that in the future. Another example of acquiring property was at the end of Portland Avenue Marsh. That property was for sale. The city could have bought it if we had the funds to do it. So it would be a vacant lot or some of willing seller that the city would be interested in. But that wouldn't be the primary focus uh for the downtown revitalization.
I have, I have one.
Counselor Alexander.
So you said in the past, there'd been a bunch of changes to the amendment and stuff. So I'm wondering, is it, has the city thought about sunsetting this district?
That's a good uh suggestion and, and I think what if, if the council does move forward with a substantial amendment that we would sunset it at the end of 2033. I think that that should be part of this discussion that we, that we have if we're going to move forward.
The, the other thing I can chime in there, if it's okay, is that if you, if you sunset it without doing the amendment, you could form a new urban renewal area over that same boundary, but it would be years before you would have nine million dollars available to you to be able to spend. And that is the reason why a lot of urban renewal districts end up doing these minor adjustments to increase the maximum indebtedness because the timeframe for reaching that becomes a short timeframe. Whereas if you sunset the district and start out all over, you're starting again with just that three percent appreciation over the new boundary area. So you can do that, but there are trade-offs to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Cook.
Um, I have two more questions. Um, Jackie, you mentioned that this has been, we've done twenty-three amendments, amendments since the nineteen nineties. Um, how many of those were, and like gut check is okay, but how many of those were minor amendments? And how many of those were cons, like substantial amendments, like the ones we're talking about today?
I don't know, Elaine, if you have that in front of you.
Yeah, I, I do not believe, and I can confirm it tomorrow, but I do not believe you have done a substantial amendment to the plan. You have not increased your maximum indebtedness. And when um I did the amendment with you in two thousand sixteen, uh, we received an, a, a legal interpretation that you could do that under a one percent minor amendment provision. So uh, uh, that was not a substantial amendment. And I believe all of the other ones were also done as minor amendments.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, and, and I, I will say that um in all my years in dealing with urban renewal, how Gladstone got to its boundary, I, I have no idea. Because urban renewal is, should be targeted to areas where we do want to redevelop. And we're finally now getting it onto Portland Avenue uh where the focus should be. In the past, it's always been a, uh, infrastructure, a project at the school. Um, and it's been very wonky. And so now we're trying to really focus on where the money should be spent. And then when we're done, sunset the district.
Love it. My second question was, why the heck in the world was the original boundary not including Portland Avenue? And I, I think you just addressed that. Um, thank you.
One more question for Elaine. Um, you, you had a chart that showed the impact of doing the amendment. And the column on the right was all numbers in parentheses. Um, explain a little bit about what that means to all these districts around us. Are they losing tax revenue that they would otherwise get uh during the next several years? Uh, i- i- am I interpreting that correctly? Uh, and how does that impact uh the programs and services that those various districts provide?
So for the first column on that slide, yeah, um, it, it, it's the impact on taxing districts slide that was in your PowerPoint. And the first column is no amendment. So that's if you just let your district sunset in fiscal year in twenty twenty-five. And I can, I, I can say that um that is totally foregone revenue. We know for sure that that revenue will not go to those taxing districts. Um, i- i- in, in any case, and we know that that revenue is certain. Um, part of it's already, already sitting there and you're beginning fund balance and you have another year of tax increment revenues to take. If you do the amendment, that is projected on new, some new development occurring within the area, but it's also projected on just keeping that amount of acreage that you have in that three percent amount. So that three percent amount is the amount that the taxing districts are really still foregoing is that increase that they would have gotten um if urban renewal were not there. Uh, when I talked about the assumptions for the area, we talked about one big twenty million dollar uh mixed-use development. Whether or not that would go forward without urban renewal is a, a question. And I think uh your staff knows more about the thoughts on that potential development. But we usually talk about those big developments that are projected as but for urban renewal, that that amount of money wouldn't happen unless you have the kinds of assistance that undertaking this amendment will allow you to provide to the developer to allow that development to happen. So those are kind of uh imaginary um increases that wouldn't happen to those taxing districts unless that development proceeds. So that, that part uh i- is not the, the real impact. The real impact is that three percent that keeps building off of the existing base. And in terms of services, what the impact on services, I, I am not the correct person to answer that question. I know for the city itself, um, you know, you, you are just starting your budget cycle or in your budget cycle. And as you look at your budget cycle, you know that a portion of monies that could be going to your city budget are going to urban renewal. They're getting leveraged by all those other monies. You're leveraging your city money by all those other monies from the other taxing districts. So you're getting more money on that dollar by leveraging them through urban renewal. But those other taxing districts, you're leveraging and getting to spend, those other taxing districts are, are not getting that extra money to spend. What they're getting is the hope and promise of future increased assessed values and increased economic activity and increased health in your city that will keep those taxes coming into them in the future and increase taxes.
Which is why finally investing in Portland Avenue really makes sense because there was no investment happening on, happening that, that increased our tax base on much of the other land that was designated as part of our district. Um, it's just pieces of property that were never going to be developed at anywhere close to a twenty million dollar level uh or anything near it. Uh, so um, okay, that's a helpful explanation of that. Um, so what would you like us to do tonight? What kind of decision would you like us uh to, to make for you to guide you and where you take us on the next steps?
Well, you can say, okay, thank you very much. We got that work done and let's not do anything else. That's not going to solve our problem with economic development on Portland Avenue. If it's a consensus of the council to move forward to the next phase, as Elaine said, it still will take six to eight months, which will involve a very public process with all the impacted taxing districts. So I need a consensus as to whether or not you would like the city to continue to move over and move up into the next phase of this process or if you want to just stay static and leave the plan as is.
All right, all right. Counselor Alexander, you had a feeling about it?
I say option one, yes, because I think the benefits and what they've laid out tonight are well worth the city going forward.
So you would, you would like to go for, o- option one is not the option of not do anything, it's the option of.
It's, it's the one of, of go forward. No, it's it's the one of of go forward with.
Oh, okay, okay. Oh, yeah, the option one is just not option one as well from just out of her mouth, but option one.
Oh, yeah.
For what's on the on the uh on the on the agenda, okay? All right, uh, other counselors, uh, comments?
I'm in agreement.
You're in agreement.
To move forward with the process.
Okay. Counselor Roberts, I see you nodding your head. Counselor Riechel nodding her head. Uh, I think I'm nodding my head too. I think for the for the first time, we're kind of making use of this in the way it should be uh used. Um, although we did benefit in to some extent from by using it on these buildings here. Uh, uh, but in fact, to a great extent, I mean, we're we're in a great building that did not cost our taxpayers any additional funds. So um, all right, so I think that that gives you uh the direction to go ahead on this. Uh, Elaine, we look forward to working with you and appreciate your expertise on this. And your company's assistance in guiding through on the future, so uh staff will bring us a proposal to formalize this soon. Uh, but I think uh and and John, uh, I hope that that your dreams and aspirations for this community. Are reflected in uh, you know, what we hope will be. Uh, yeah, a a couple of years ago, it was not the time to have this sort of investment during COVID. I was always amazed at how many people did open new businesses or take over closed businesses and get them started during a pandemic. Uh, but coming out of it, when people are much more positive about the direction of our economy, uh, I I think this is very good timing for us. So uh, we appreciate you and Marcy for uh, you know, keep having that contact and and helping us to 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 communicate and help envision a a positive direction. So thank you both for coming tonight, and we have other items for our work session. So I will um entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Um, Tammy, can you uh call the role, please?
Counselor Huckabee.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Riechel.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Roberts.
Yes.
Mayor Milch.
Yes, uh, we are adjourned as an urban renewal agency, and uh we now move into a work session. Uh, we have several items on our agenda, the first being to hear from our elected representative in Salem. Uh, Representative Vanessa Hartman for House District Forty. She is here with her legislative assistant, so welcome.
Button, I remember, okay. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to be back here. Um, as I know most of you, if not all of you, Vanessa Hartman, State Representative for House District Forty. And I'll let my chief of staff introduce himself.
Hi, I'm Daniel Mulcahy, I'm Representative Hartman's Legislative Director. Good to see you all.
Um, we do have a presentation. Just wait, but I'm here to inundate you with lots and lots of information. Try to um answer questions to the best of my ability, but if I cannot, I will follow up. Um, and get those um answers to you, but we'll really just go while she's pulling that up. Um, I think the goal for me this evening uh was really to just give you an overview of how the session went, what we accomplished, what we look forward to bringing. Um, for future sessions, we'll talk a little bit about um. Some of the bigger topics, which were House Bill four thousand two, which is um what a lot of people knows that Measure one ten reform bill. Uh, but we call it the Oregon Drug Implementation Plan, so O-DIP is what you'll hear me talk about. We'll talk about the um governor's housing package, do a little um kind of thirty thousand foot uh view of what that package did. Um, and then what our priority bill was and how that was successful and what we um what we hoped to change with that. As well as uh one of my favorite sections is the uh in district funding victories, as well as Clackamas County funding victories. We uh came out pretty great this short session compared to the long session, so really proud of that work. Uh, and then uh lastly, as I'm sure you all um would imagine that I would bring it up, is to talk a little bit about where tolling is at currently. And so, yes, there we go. Beautiful. Thank you so much. You're in control, though, right?
So I'm bringing you the.
Oh. Thank you. All right, gave you a little bit of the overview. This is just a picture of the team to the, I guess my left of me um is Camila. She's our legislative aide that does all of the constituent responses. And so if you have a constituent that needs something, uh, she has been the one to sort of help them work through that casework or answer any questions about my position on bills. And then obviously, this is Daniel um in the last year, has been with me from the very beginning. And as all you all can attest, um, our lives um are not possible in this work without our wonderful staff making the world go around. And um both of them have really made this experience um just absolutely incredible, so I think them both. Um, all right, so we'll just jump right in. How much time do I have, actually? Oh, no, I won't do that to you. Okay, okay.
You have just about the number, right number of pages in your in your presentation, so uh just.
You want me to spend one minute? Okay. Okay, so as I sort of, as I mentioned before, um, you know, there were some key topics that the entire body was focused in on. Um, the fentanyl crisis being the number one, continuing with the housing production, and then reducing the cost of living for um for Oregonians. Uh, just as a little like fun fact, um, for the short session, it can be only thirty-five days. I think we ended at thirty-two. Um, each member can only bring two bills um during this short session, so there were two hundred ninety-one of those bills. With a hundred and fifteen of those sent to the governor's desk to be signed. A hundred and eight of those were substantially bipartisan, and when we say substantially, that means there were five plus Republican either votes or sponsors within that particular bill. So we came out uh with ninety-four percent of the policy we worked on being um bipartisan, which is um was was huge, a huge effort for a lot of us. Um, before I move on, I just want to refresh everyone's memories about the committees that I serve on. There's a lot, there's there's, I could take two hours to tell you of all the work and behind the scenes. There's a lot of work that goes into the individual committees that we serve on that maybe I don't have particular bills on, but that I work intensely on the policy that we we come through. And so the first one is the information management and technology. Um, like I joke all the time, I think they just put me there because I'm a millennial, uh, and I only know technology there. Uh, but our big focus this time was AI, um, and really creating an AI task force to uh really uh push us forth in the future. Of how we can utilize AI without while also being secure. As I'm sure you're all aware, several cyber attacks have happened, um, including Oregon City. Uh, and it's just something that we need to get on top of. And so that task force will begin and hopefully come up with some policy recommendations for the twenty twenty-five session. Uh, the others are the Early Childhood Human Services, Housing and Homelessness, um, and the Subcommittee on Transportation Planning. Those three I will talk about a little bit throughout this this slide. Um, and lastly, I am the Vice Chair of the Agriculture, Land Use, Natural Resources, and Water Committee. Um, we accomplished quite a bit of work around water equity and water work, um, funding the Agriculture Heritage Fund. Um, and then for some people, if you want to nerd out on ag, uh, past uh funding to study PFAS. In uh biological solids that are applied to ag land and see.
Hey, I know what that is.
Oh, do we have a local PFAS nerd here? Uh, to see what the impact is um on our soil um throughout some of our districts. And so that was a huge um uh huge, huge win for us. And the other one that came out of two of the committees were um individual infrastructure projects. And I I bring that up mainly because it's one of the biggest things I've learned over these past two years is how bills go to ways and means to die. Uh, and when I say that is if we have a project, um, we want to fund infrastructure funding across the state. We're not necessarily the ones that are in the room deciding what projects get passed first. And so there were two bills that were just beautiful uh bills that I would love to explore more for future projects with with both cities. Uh, where we identified projects and we were like, these are the ones that are shovel ready, we can have housing, or we can do this, blah, 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 blah. Um, both of those bills passed out of the committees and were able to fund those individual projects. So as legislators, we had more control over what projects and how important those were when we called them out in a policy bill, which is not something that I have learned. Um, that has been done before, and so that was a a huge uh win and and could change the way that we as legislators. Um, uh, fund future projects, um, because otherwise it's it's just the ways and means committee that will sit down with a big spreadsheet and be like, yes, yes, yes. So I I just want to bring that in. Um, I'll jump to next, and we'll go into the um big one, the Drug Implementation Plan. Oh, let me change it on my computer too. Uh, so this particular bill, I I did not serve on this committee. So a a separate subcommittee was created to attack attack this problem. Um, and really dive into how we can give law enforcement the tools that they need, how we can continue to invest dollars um into treatment first. Um, and while also investing dollars into our workforce issue. Um, we have a huge backlog within a lot of our DA offices. We have um a lack of, I think, three thousand, is it a high number of a of public defenders? And so we uh really needed to look across the entire spectrum of how is this going to work? The one thing we we knew and we heard from constituents is that we might have to do something. We were also very much facing a uh ballot measure that would have completely repealed Measure one ten, which would have also taken those dollars and investments into the treatment centers away. And so uh that is what we were up against. Um, I say this because um typically, uh, when you're not in committees that you don't serve on, we don't spend a ton of time on that policy. We trust the committee, but because of my own personal lived experience with addiction and with losing um folks from overdose. It was a huge priority for our office to be really, really involved and push our way into this conversation. Um, we uh went on a ride along with the Oregon City Police. Uh, we talked to quite a bit of high school students um and younger um college students, and the message was loud and clear. Uh, and this is a direct quote from a a recent graduate from Oregon City High School. Uh, that the s- the smart adults uh have made hard drugs seem safer than alcohol. And that really struck me when we're standing in this classroom and you're like, wow, I remember when I was eighteen. Uh, but basically, they had it easier to um go buy drugs than it is to go and try and buy alcohol from the store. And so for me as a parent, that was a huge focus. Um, how can we um target uh not the addict, but the dealers? How can we um get addicts within the treatment that they need? And that's still very much a pillar of the beliefs that I have um with the parts that I thought Measure one ten was working. Um, the parts that we really focused in on was treatment first, second, and third, oh, thank you. Uh, second and third, um, I have a really beautiful handout that um I forgot to send ahead of time, but it's two pages. That really lays out all of the investments that this bill, this one hundred and thirty-seven page bill put into um the state. As well as it lays out the path that we're hoping to see in terms of deflection. Um, really, it's kind of a um fourth strike, you're out, uh, really, is what 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 is what uh landed on that one? And we are treating it similar to DUIs, um, and it creating an entirely new misdemeanor, so it's unrestricted misdemeanor. Um, there are enhanced penalties now for, uh, I believe it's five hundred feet out of treatment centers and shelters, uh, and thirty feet um from parks. And um, so we 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 focused in on that. One of the bills that I did bring forward was a pill press bill, um, which would um essentially ban the use of personal pill presses to really target those sort of large scale. Uh, drug dealers in the area. Um, and why that was a concern uh was really because Washington just banned them. Um, British Columbia banned them, and all of the surrounding states around us have really in higher penalties for the use of um personal pill presses. So really looking forward that everyone's coming here um and speaking with the the DA and the sheriff's office. It's something that we're seeing increasing of, um, sort of in our rural areas. And so plans to bring that back, um, to have that uh more of a discussion um in in the coming sessions. Um, some of the bigger, the the more wonderful things about this bill um is that it did invest eighty eighty-five million dollars in shovel-ready projects. So projects that can start today uh and start expanding that treatment. Uh, again, this this handout I'll send to you all for you to look at has a list of where that's all going. Um, and then the other part that I was involved in was the Medication Assisted Treatment, or MAT, which dedicates ten million dollars to expand access um in jails. And that one was a personal one for me. I lost my stepbrother to a fentanyl overdose. Uh, and he was in jail and did not have access to treatment, and so this was a huge portion of me. We're hearing a lot of people are becoming addicts in jail. Uh, and so we have a lot to do in that area, a lot more education, a lot more um oversight. And but this ten million will will begin that process for us to sit there. The other piece, again, coming back to the youth part, is there is an um intense amount of funding uh for uh education amongst our youth programs. Um, they'll be creating, I believe, a a a task force, if you will, to identify how we can educate high school students and middle school students. Um, as well as um anyone under the age of twenty-five. And so you'll be seeing a lot of work around that come out and in partnership with a lot of the programs that are deciding to um stand up that deflection program. Um, and we, I think we left the session with uh at least twenty-three, if not more now, that have signed on to supporting the deflection program. Um, across the state, um, which is still short of uh the entire thirty-six counties that we have in the state. Um, but Clackamas County is was one of the first ones to step on board and and really um in- invest in that treatment first policy, so. Moving on, should have brought some water. Moving on um to the housing package. Uh, this particular package was um somewhat of a cleanup from the package, the owner package that we did in the long session. Uh, really focusing um in on allowing cities to extend their UGB. Um, it is a one-time only in, I believe, the ten years that we're we're doing this right now. And one of the requirements, there's many requirements, but one of the requirements is that it it has to be proven that there's thirty percent affordable housing within that, if you want to expand. Um, you're talking about a lot of like urban renewal stuff, so. Um, there's a a ton of funding that went into um homeless shelter support, to recovery housing. It was a huge focus, um, that intersection between addiction and lack of secure housing. Um, there's money that was uh allocated to OHCS for rental assistance. Um, and thirty percent of that will go to culturally specific organizations to help with that rent assistance and that education, the pathway to homeownership. Um, and there's also, again, this is that one hundred million dollars for the direct allocations for infrastructure projects. That is those two bills that I was talking about, so that lists out um various dozens of different projects across the state. Um, and then there's also uh money that was allocated for land acquisition to convert um buildings into affordable housing, which also would include like churches or older child cares or an old library. Um. Some of the other sort of reduction of cost of living bills that were done by colleagues of mine that I was very much a a champion of. Uh, we made prescription drugs more affordable for Oregonians to help out with their out-of-pocket costs. Uh, we ended up investing one hundred and seventy-one million dollars into the Employment Related Daycare Fund. Uh, continuing, we will continue to advocate for a lot more funding in that employment-related daycare program. Um, and then we also uh passed Senate Bill fifteen ninety-five, which is a project of a colleague, Representative Sosa, who's been working on that for several sessions now. And got it to a place where we had bipartisan support. Um, and really uh protects the consumer from unfair debt collection practices. So those are some, a little bit of other highlights. My priority bill uh was a victims' rights package. Uh, did did two things, and that was um victims of revenge porn. Um, I hope you're all familiar with what that phrase is, but basically if you're in a relationship, you send photos to one another, you break up. Uh, people have then used those personal photos to share, to embarrass, harass, or intimidate. Uh, and there was a word in the statute that said identifiable, and that means anyone in this room had to identify the image. And just a layperson, even if you know or my my mom knows that, you know, I have a birthmark. Um, it had to be just the layperson to identify. Um, our, and that caused a lot of roadblocks when um victims were trying to get justice for the um for what they were going through. And so it simply removes the word identifiable. You have to go through all the same process, you still have to go through court and do all those things. It doesn't um automatically assume you're going to get um, you know, a charge, but it uh allows for even the process to begin. The second part of this bill um expanded restraining order uh filings on abuse um victims. Um, previous to this, you could only file where you or your abuser lives, not where the abuse occurred. And so in our case, in the tri-county area, uh, you could, um, someone would live in Washington County, live in Clackamas, but both of you work in Multnomah County. You wouldn't be able to file a restraining order um within Multnomah County, and now you will be able to. So that was a huge, huge win. Um, I think the the big part is we we ended up with forty-nine sponsors, that is bicameral bipartisan. So we really had a um a a great group of of working people to get to get these two um across the finish line, and they passed unanimously out of both chambers. So I feel proud about that, so. Um, uh, onto the funding. Um, overall, we secured fifty-five million dollars for infrastructure and support services in the entire Clackamas County. Um, specifically, uh, two million for the Homing uh Homeless Solutions Coalition of Clackamas County for Oregon City's Resource Center. Uh, that'll be uh such a a wonderful addition to the community uh in partnership with Love One and Father's Heart. Uh, to really get them the infrastructure that they need and deserve for all the work that they do for the county and and for our homeless population. Um, we uh got four million for the Crisis Stabilization Center to be announced of where that is going to be located. Um, and and I won't read them off individually, but but it was um a huge win for us to see the amount of investments that come not only into this district, to House District Forty. Um, but also to the um to the entire uh county. I think the one that will apply the most to Gladstone is um we uh secured three million dollars to Oak Lodge Water Services. Uh, so that they can. uh so that they can um not have to pass that on to your ratepayers. And uh, that was a huge win as well, so that'll go to some of their infrastructure needs there.
And that's that you mentioned uh twenty point seven million to for Clackamas County law enforcement to set up a deferment program. Is that the same as the deflection programs associated with? So when the county said, we're on board, they said, we're on board if you help pay for it, and you did secure the funding for it.
There was no, there was no funding gonna go to any county unless they agreed to set up a deflection deferment program. I'll just.
Very good. So you both got what you wanted.
Correct, yes, yeah, we both got what we wanted. We're very much trying to approach the topic as a partnership um, both state and county. Uh, that doesn't, um, we we expect investments to come from the county in addition to the investments that the state is doing as well.
Very good.
So, thank you for the clarification. Um, some other sort of general funding victories that were near and dear to my heart were uh the crime victims' funding that just funds projected costs for the continuing of our CACs or Children Advocacy Centers. Um, it funds some grant programs and successor programs. Uh, thirty million for summer learning programs. That one million for the Just Futures Initiative is for um some water equity projects. So they'll manage um safe drinking water applications and and help people be able to test their wells, certain things like that. Almost six million dollars as grants to venues for arts and culture programming. Um, and then the the other uh, the one, the other, when we advocated for was four hundred thousand dollars for the AG Sexual Assault Task Force, uh Sexual Assault Nurse Examiner and Sexual Assault Examiner Certificate Certification Commission. Uh, again, one of those um sectors that has a huge backlog and um a lack of workforce there. Um, and then the others are are, you know, five point one million to the Agriculture Heritage Fund, which helps keeps some farms in business and promotes people to be farmers in the state.
And you wanna say something about the Children's Commission?
Oh, I just give over that one. Yes, so we um, one point four million went to the uh Clackamas County Children's Commission. Um, it was used for some of the infrastructure of uh some of their buildings that they asked um for. And the big one, we can all take a moment to do a little silent clap here. Um, after months, years for some of us. Tolling has been, uh, I will say, stopped in terms of regional mobility pricing. Uh, tolling will still be a part of the IBR um that is still moving forward. Uh, there are still discussions around whether or not tolls will be on the Abernathy Bridge solely to fund um the four hundred eighty million dollars that is a deficit of how much we have to pay back for that bridge. Um, that is still the conversation that is that is up in the air about whether or not tolls is the answer specifically just for the bridge. Um, so that's still in the part of our advocacy. Uh, the big focus uh that we will need to be lasered in on going into the twenty twenty-five session is the transportation package. We have to figure out a way to meaningfully fund our transportation system, which is why I can, we'll consistently, until we get one, call for an audit of ODOT to understand where the gaps are. Um, we know that there is a somewhat decline of gas tax. We know that there is a um imbalance in the wait-mile tax for our um our trucking industry. There's a lot we have to talk about and a lot we have to figure out on how we're going to do that. And so that is the focus. Um, as as sure some of you are familiar, we have a Clackamas Caucus um within the legislature, and we meet about once a month, and tolling and funding transportation is one of our our main priorities. Senator Meek, Representative Neron, Representative Walters. Um, we continue to to really just push into the conversation uh and make sure that our voices continue to be heard. But this was a a unexpected win, I would say. It's, you know, we can, we had the the Subcommittee on Transportation Planning. Uh, there was no way anyone sitting up on that committee was leaving the Gladstone meeting without realizing that there was a problem. And we were not just whining. And so I I'm very, very, very much grateful for the governor's decision. I am grateful for uh Mayor Milch, uh many mayors, uh Commissioner Savis, Commissioner Lewis, the many people that have been in my uh kitchen cabinet of um tolling and transportation. So I thank you so much for dedicating that time. It's not over though, so. You haven't gotten rid of me yet. Um, and lastly, I just wanted to sort of give a quick overview of what our uh future initiatives are, what we're working on in the interim. Uh, we do a lot of work around domestic violence fixes, and so really looking at no statutes for limitations for felony sex crimes. Um, talking about AI in terms of an AI porn ban. Um, it's gotten really eas- so advanced, it it's easily to make um an alter a photo. Um, and then some anti-bullying statutes, um talking about invasion of privacy. We attempted that with that Victims' Rights Package. It just needed a little bit more work um and and a little more discussion around. I guess, privacy. This is a part of legislation I don't like. Then the the, we will plan to have a housing package um requirement to um. Right now, municipal water providers are the only ones to require to send results of water quality uh to the property um owner, not necessarily the tenant. And so it leaves a lot of people not knowing if their drinking water is safe. Um, same goes for uh wells, um just like when we buy houses here in Gladstone, we do the testing for it. I'm drawing the blank, what's the tank? What's the thing under the, not radon, subject tank, subject tank, sorry. I was like, what is that big thing on the ground? Um, you know, we have those, we have those policies. We don't really have any policies um in Oregon statute uh to provide clean drinking water when you're buying a home. And so we're gonna look into into policy around that. Uh, one policy that comes from Gladstone, if you remember the squatter's house on East Fairfield, um, that had some issues that I believe Chief Schmiller had to deal with quite often. Uh, we will be looking at um giving more rights to tenants when squatters are in your home, when you, basically when you buy it from an auction. So right now, there has to be an agreement, a tenant relationship um in order for you to be able to evict. In that particular case, the tenant bought the um house on an auction uh and did not have that relationship with the folks that were squatting in that house. And of all the loopholes, it took him very, very long time to actually be able to evict him, not him being able to to, you know, change that house for quite a while. So we'll be looking to that. It's a sensitive subject. Um, I'm very aware, you know, we're we're not trying to take away rights of people, but we just wanna be able to make life a little bit easier when people are buying homes. And so um, the other, a couple of the other ones are really around discrimination against emancipated youth or homeless youth. Um, and then requiring units be actually habitable before renting them out or selling them. And the last big one is that upper left-hand corner, which is the Grants Agency. Uh, we are really looking at a way to take a holistic approach to how government gets money on the ground and fast. Uh, we have seen many times where legislation is passed where we create a new grants program. We'll take measure one, ten as an example. Um, that uh it took them eighteen months to two years to stand up a program because it's not something that agency typically does. Our goal is to create an eight grants agency. So people who are familiar with those grants, people are familiar with their constituents, how to operate them, how to build them, how to score them, how to deliver the money, all of the things that goes into working with grants. Uh, the hope is really um to be able to get that money out the door. There are some, like, uh, one of the stories we we, you know, started this work on is um policy back a couple of sessions ago, we're passed to go to the uh VA. And and the lady was like, I don't know anything, like, how how am I supposed to do this? But it was, it was fast, it was good moving, and um what she had learned from that was really if we had someone dedicated to getting this grant dollars on the ground, we could have actually helped people faster and quicker. So um, it is something I don't believe we're gonna get done in in a first session. That'll probably be a pilot program. I think that's, we're trying to figure out what agency that is. But I I do very much believe that um we need to find a better and more streamlined uh process to getting my money out the ground um onto the ground and actually helping people immediately. So um, though, that's what I got for you. And again, we can go to questions and happy to answer them. If I don't know a question, I will, or answer, I will come back to you.
I I just wanted to say, measure one, ten, you know, the lesson, one of the lessons we learned from this is when something comes into law out of a a voter initiative, sometimes all of the uh supportive uh means of making it work aren't really there. And, you know, we're we're trying to work it, make it work uh before it's really ready to work. I'm amazed. It it feels like I learned more and you accomplished more in this short session than it felt like you did in the whole long session last year. And on this particular thing, where you had something that had been in place for a while, but, you know, you had a choice. Well, do we, do we let it try to accomplish what it's supposed to accomplish, or do we make a change? And uh, the way that you were able to come together and come up with some changes and really address the concerns of law enforcement, of uh the prosecutors, of the communities that and 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 the people and the families that were so affected by this was was very impressive. Uh, so uh, behind you, you may not know it. We have members of our police force here tonight for another item on our agenda. And I know they are probably going to be helped by uh some of the changes that the legislature made on that issue because uh there just wasn't quite the support for for everyone that we needed when we first started. So uh, for that one especially, I'm grateful to the work that you all did collectively uh and the way you involved the people who were most affected by that. Uh, are there comments or questions? Let's see, uh, I think Council Huckabee, you had your light on first.
Um, so I have two questions. I'm going to ask what's probably the quicker answer first. With the one point four million for the Clackamas County Children's Commission, um, there was a proposal for the uh YMCA site in Gladstone on Webster um that was not approved or did not go through. Do you have insight as to why?
I'm not, thank you for the question. Uh, I'm not going to speak for our our co-chairs or our Ways and Means folks as to their decision of of how they uh go through the giant list that they get of projects to fund. Um, what I will share is, so there were three sites uh that were um advocated by the Clackamas Children's Commission. Um, they did come in, I will be honest, a little late into the process. We had submitted our ten budget requests already. Um, but it didn't mean that we weren't gonna try uh to do that because we know how important childcare is. Um, my understanding is uh, and what I've learned is when we're asking for funding, it it really is about um a public partnership, if you will. So the other two projects that were funded um had support from their cities um in terms of money and funding. Um, they had some support from private donors as well. And so they really looked to um, is this a partnership for the community? And how, like, for lack of better words, I think it's like they 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 don't wanna just give the money without showing the effort of what the community is also doing in itself. So my hunch is that since there was not, it didn't, not a partnership of other entities providing funding for this particular location, that is why they decided to fund the other two, which did have um more support from those particular cities. And it was in Milwaukee um and like uh West West Lynn, Lake Oswego, Lake Oswego, at the Merrill Hars campus. So that is my assumption, um, because I have seen that happen, but I I I'm pretty sure that that's why. But it's something I've connected with the Children's Commission on how we can be better prepared for the long session and get that ask in as quickly as possible.
Great, thank you. Um, the second one, I hope I get these questions out right. Measure one, ten and HB forty oh two. So this was a lot of controversy around this, as we all know. Not everybody's happy that it got passed the um four thousand two. Can you touch on first what I'm gonna ask? What would have happened had it not passed?
I think that that's a lot of confusion. If we just, if if it wasn't passed in the House. So I I will follow up with a more detailed.
Yeah.
Answer for sure, because I I um wanna make sure I get the details of the ballot measure that would have happened. So if we, if we didn't pass anything, uh, this ballot measure would have one hundred percent been passed. Um, and it was um uh completely repealing measure one, ten. Um, it was removing dollars from the uh commission that was created. Um, and it was um increasing penalties outright to a misdemeanor, A, I believe. Um, and then there were several other things that it did. Um, and so that was really what we were up against. Um, it's the same thing with the campaign finance reform. We were up against another ballot measure. Um, and it really would have not been a thoughtful process, in my opinion. It wouldn't have been a thoughtful process. This brought together uh DAs, it brought together sheriffs, it brought together police chiefs. It also brought together providers, it brought together medical providers, um it brought together peer-to-peer service providers. Um, but I'm not gonna sit here and say that I'm a hundred percent happy with it either. You know, I really wish we, um, it wasn't an opt-in. I really wish every county was on board with this program. I think um, I could be, every surrounding county for us is is in, but I think for the entirety of the state. Um, when some don't participate, that means people are coming here, overloading our systems here. And so to me, it really needed to be a full team effort. Everyone needed to be on board. So that would say that's the biggest disappointment for me. But it is night and day different and better than if we would have done nothing. I will say that. So, and yeah, if you might.
Thank you, uh, Council Huckabee. So the one thing I'll add is just that when you have things that are ballot measures, because they're voter-approved measures, they require a two-thirds majority within the legislature to change. So we have measure eleven and that established mandatory minimums back in the nineties. We still have those mandatory minimums, and it's such a big burden for uh defendants in cases because they have a huge incentive. If they have a mandatory minimum for each charge, there's a huge incentive for them to take a settlement, right? And so it's almost impossible for us to change that because it was a voter-approved initiative that requires a two-thirds majority, and we don't have anywhere near a two-thirds majority of of Democrats in the legislature. So having this repeal be a uh voter-backed initiative would have made it incredibly, basically impossible for us to to do the kinds of, you know, treatment-based um uh work that we'd like to do.
Great, thank you. And the second question, same topic. What is the most immediate thing we're going to see here? Cause shovel-ready projects, great, they're not gonna happen next week or next month. Um, you know, more money for public defenders, great, not gonna happen next week or next month. Um, so are we going to start seeing more penalties faster than we have remedies, if that makes sense?
Um, so, so each person who opted in has until September first um to uh begin uh the re-criminalizing piece. Um, the goal, each count, what did I say? Oh, person, sorry. Each county, I followed. Um, and so, you know, we have, you know, several months, uh, six months or five, I guess, five months at this point. For them to stand up their deflection programs, for them to really get that infrastructure in place. Um, and and we did that, uh, we we pushed it to the September with the the hopes that we would have these programs in place to avoid that mass amount of um uh charges. Um, they are meeting already. I I know they've been meeting since the day we stopped in the short session, and so that is the goal. Obviously, I'm not at those tables, so I can't speak fully for them. Uh, but I think some of the other things, there were direct dollars, and we can get you the whole list, to um providers that are in this district, um, Iron Tribes, one of them that is in Gladstone, um, providers that are doing on-the-ground work, that they immediately are getting funding. Um, and and with that funding, from what we've been told, they are be able to hire peer-to-peer services or hire case managers. They'll be able to um increase their capacity. Some are like, we need a van to be able to take people to a doctor's appointment. So there's a lot of um the provider piece that's going to happen quickly. Uh, when it comes to the other stuff, you know, we have until September first. Hopefully, we're in a great spot because, you know, uh, we have lead. Um, and we ha- we do have buy-in from 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 folks, so.
Great, thank you.
But we're keeping an eye.
Okay, thank you. So um, yeah, I see in here, I I like a lot of stuff going on. The uh shovel-ready projects, eighty-five point four million expanding treatment. Is that, is that a drug treatment, right? I'm just asking because the next one down says affordable mental health provider training. So what I'm hearing from all the people I talked to uh throughout the week, it don't, I think we need more mental health facilities. And so is is that ever talked about or on the on the board or? But I mean, you're up there and know what they talk about. Are they talking about making some facilities to treat the mental health people?
Absolutely.
Instead of just give the programs money and then you don't see actual facility to help them and and have a a place for them to.
Right. Yeah, no, that that eighty-five million does include projects, shovel-ready projects that are facilities.
Actually, good, that's.
Yeah, or um, you know, yeah, rebuilding the infrastructure for a facility.
Oh, good.
Um, the four million to the Oregon City um Resource Center, that is going to be a facility.
That was my next, the four, cause it's construct a crisis stabilization center. That's in the county, right?
It is in the county.
And you, you meant, I don't know if you've got to see it, but so last time, we had the chief of Milwaukee Police here, and he had a guy with him, a behavioral health specialist who makes a big difference. And if they could fund something like that at this behavioral, you know, this crisis stabilization center, that would be a great thing to be able to have the cities have have access to those kind of people. It just, and and you don't know where in the county it's going, though?
Not that I can disclose. No, and I I I will say, you know, this um, the four million to the Crisis Stabilization Center is a, is is a a beautiful vision project, you know, that um we have worked uh closely with um some of the commissioners, including Commissioner West. Uh, and the goal is really to be a one-stop shop um for folks that are in crisis, uh whether it's addiction or domestic violence. Uh, and so that is the the vision and the hope. Where that is going to land. or domestic violence. And so that is the the vision and the hope. Where that is going to land, we will see.
All right. And and I think I just hope all your future initiatives is passed.
Thank you, thank you.
Council Riechel, did you have any questions or comments?
No, I I'm very excited about a lot of this stuff that is listed in here. And I, just to kind of piggyback on what Counselor Alexander was saying, both he and I went to like a luncheon presentation last spring regarding the Resource Center at Oregon City. And I just think that that is such a fun, phenomenal project. And I'm really excited to see how that kind of develops. And I really, really hope that we're able to provide that kind of vital resource to our community. So thank you to both of you for all the hard work that you've done. And this is just fantastic. So thank you.
Thank you for those words of affirmation. Councilor Cook.
Yeah, I have a quick question. So I haven't seen, it's a question about ERDC, which I know you didn't work on that directly, but there was some, there were some news articles back in the fall of last year saying that ERDC funding was so strapped that they were putting qualified families on waitlists. So you mentioned there's a House bill in here, I'm sorry, Senate bill that addresses that. Has that been improved? Or it's like, there were a bunch of news articles saying there was a problem and then like crickets. So has that ever resolved? Like, do you have an update for that area?
Again, definitely will follow up with with a lot more information to combat some of the things you might have seen in the news. The ERDC funding, the 171 million, addresses a lot of those gaps that were talked about. It was a shortfall funding miss in the long session. But it's just the beginning. Do I wish we would have gotten 250 million for ERDC? Absolutely. But I'm not the one to sign off on those things. But it does definitely addresses some of those gaps that you have heard about, specifically with the Tana families. Those families, when the separation of ERDC happened, were left out. And so that really was the target, to get those families back on track, back on the end. But we still will have a waitlist as of right now. But we'll we'll follow up with some more information.
Councilor Roberts?
I have no questions. I just appreciate you guys' qualities presentations when you come here, and I look forward to your next one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm grateful to for all you did, for the effective way you share and for how well you represent our community and work together and work with other elected leaders. I know that we have a lot more people in state government now who have some background in city government. And I think we're seeing these last couple sessions, that's making a difference. There's a greater awareness of the needs of cities and the resources of cities and what we have to offer in addressing some of the state's needs. And as I was telling a group of mayors just this afternoon, the more that the state recognizes that the cities have resources and abilities and, you know, the talent to address problems and scale solutions to problems to their own communities. And the more we get the support from the state in in being allowed to do that, I think the better we will be as a state in addressing many of these concerns. So we're grateful to you for coming and look forward to if you're around next year, in the same capacity to having you here again. So I don't want to assume anything. We're not here to be political, but for right now, we're very grateful to have your representation.
Thank you so much. And thank you for giving us the time to present to you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Chief Murber, you are next on our agenda, a presentation about the Gladstone Police Department Wellness Program.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, City Council. A question was asked to us through city administrative beds about how do we take care of our officers? What's what's wellness? We all know there's staffing shortages all over the country, not just, not just the Portland metropolitan area on law enforcement. And then how do we keep and how to retain our employees? Wellness is part of it. A little over a year ago, we started peer support. We recognized the critical incidents and and other events that we needed people there to support our officers. And I don't want to take too much thunder away because I have Sergeant Hutchinson here and and our chaplain, Kevin Smith, part of our peer support group. And Sergeant Hutchinson actually oversees our wellness program. Let them give you a little bit of an overview of that, kind of an informal overview, and allow you to ask questions about what we're doing, how we're doing it, more specifically on and how we how we deal with and cope with some of the things we see. Because what you'll hear is, a majority of people in society will will experience a traumatic incident maybe once in their lifetime. We'll see them four or five times in a month. And so how do we deal with those? And how do we cope? And how do we continue to move on? How do we continue to provide the best possible service we can for our community, based on everything we see and do? And how do we take care of ourselves when you don't see us? And and so I'm going to go ahead and introduce Sergeant Hutchinson and Chaplain Kevin Smith, and let them go up and give you an overview.
There's a button on the microphone. If you push it, it'll stay on and just aim it toward the speaker and great.
Okay, is it working?
It's working.
Excellent. Hello, Sergeant Hutchinson, Gladstone Police Department. I met a few of you, but now I'm getting everybody else. I've been with the department for about 11 years now. This is new for me, new for the department, having a wellness program in place. Predominantly, I mean, we, it's incorporating the use of the peer support program, the chaplaincy. In addition to another outside service, we've responder life that we use. What is a wellness program? Why do we need it? That's basically what I'm here for, right? Basically, the wellness program to me is more of a proactive maintaining the health, both, I mean, for mental, physical, spiritual, psychological for our officers. For basically, for my officers, I'm in a position of leadership. All the people, you know, below me, but they, I basically look at as I serve them. I want to make sure they're healthy, make sure they're fit for duty, so that they provide the city with the proper service they deserve. Predominantly, what it would be focused on would be the mental health is the main focus of this, like Chief Murber said. We respond to critical incidents all the time. A lot of people in general public, they have a traumatic incident that happens once in a life. They end up having to get therapy, things like that for themselves. And they focus on that. I mean, that's, it's a big deal in their life, and I'm not downplaying that at all. We respond to critical incidents. I mean, it could be there four times a week, we're out at, you know, homicide, you know, homicides aren't so much a big thing in Gladstone, fortunately. I'd like to take credit for that for our department. Provide you the best service possible. But I mean, family disturbances, deceased, you know, persons, you know, injuries, car accidents, things that people, they rubberneck and look, you know, as they're driving by. But they don't go and experience this. They don't go firsthand. So that's what officers end up having to deal with, and I'm trying to prevent them from taking that home with them. It's it's a testament to like my family when responding to a critical incident, let's say, not a lot of officers have to deal with like baby deaths, things like that. Unfortunately, I've responded about four or five of them in my career. Most officers, zero. It's something that just I jokingly put in my do not open till therapy box. It's just one of those things you don't want to keep in there for too long because it then wears on you to where it can become a problem. It could develop into stresses that you don't know that you have. Stresses that could be taken out of your family, taken out of their officers, taken out of your performance in your in your job. So basically for this program itself, it's something that I'll incorporate where I keep tabs on the officers. Make sure they have the, they can talk to me, they can talk to other officers, other supervisors, making sure they're comfortable with the people they talk to. Also incorporating peer support, which is another program we have. Peer support, I'm not on part, I'm not on the peer support board, but Kevin Smith is, he's also our chaplain. High-quality gentleman. But it's as far as that goes, keeping tabs on them, making sure that, you know, not only for their mental health, but they're dealing with the job. But it could incorporate nutrition, you know, sleep. Unfortunately, in our line of our profession, we're in the category of getting maybe four to six hours of sleep on average. That's about four times as likely as general public in that category. We're about twice the amount to have to have stress in our lives. I mean, depression is the more I'm looking for. I was looking up the statistics on this, but you know, suffering from depression, twice the general public's. I think it's 12% versus 6%. And I mean, also, there's the the nomenclature that we have a higher divorce rate. I was looking statistically. It's a general notion that we do, but the stats don't really, you know, put that out there. But we do have a lot of problems at home with family if, depending on the hours we work and how we can cope with stress in our own lives. Additionally, as part of the wellness program, providing the department with resources for being able to deal with that, be it through peer support, being through the chaplaincy, peer support will provide more local level psychological per counseling, psychological support, things that to basically preemptive before it gets to be a problem. We also provided the chaplaincy, which then is more of, they also offer the counseling, which I can attest to. Kevin Smith has gone on plenty of ride-alongs with me, got to unload everything that's going on in my life, and he's, he's been right there for me. Additionally to that, responder life is another program we've been using. That's more of a larger scale. So if you have a critical incident, first we rely rely on peer support. They would come in, organize, having counselors available, having just any debrief for any of these incidents that need to happen. Sometimes it's a larger incident, and we only have one chaplain on, may have also Brian Early, who's also our chaplain. Let's say that's not enough. Let's say we have five officers involved in any critical incident. That's where we would have a responder life come out. And they are the ones who are basically, they can get the counselors out there that are base, what's the terminology?
Culturally competent.
Culturally competent. It's a nice buzzword, but what does that mean? That means basically tailored to more of law enforcement. Like it or not, we are a lot of type A personalities, and we don't respond well to most counseling that's just, you know, going to talk about our feelings. So we have to have people that actually want to, you know, that know that, and they can crack that that shell that we have. Additionally, from that, they can also organize debriefs. So in this critical instance, there's going to be a lot of emotions, a lot of things like that. We need to talk about it, but we also don't want to be, you know, so it'd be more confidential where we can go through how to deal with these type of situations. Additionally, trying to come back to where else? Tip, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm a little sleep deprived as well, and we're good. We're good 30 hours overtime this last week, so I'm in the middle of my vacation also, so. Traumatic incident, trauma intervention, okay, trauma intervention program, thank you. I know them as tips when I call them out. I know the S is extra, but basically, in my experience, we we respond to a traumatic incident. Typically, it's a death in the family. We always, you know, request the family, do you want tips? Do you want chaplain? They are trained to come out and help out the situation where I'm already dealing with, trying to help them come up with, let's say, where where do they want their loved one to go after post-death? Things of that nature where I have to be the more clinical version, I guess, of this. And we need somebody there who can actually take care of the family. We do our best, but again, we're cops. So in the grand scheme of things, though, this whole thing is to basically, the wellness program is to just sort of put a spearhead on this. So we all basically have, you know, the peer support, every, all these avenues are being accessed appropriately, when they need to be accessed. And just, and it's, it's, it's not just me. I'm a coordinator, but I'm also part of the, just the team, coordinators team. I'm working hand in hand with the chaplains, so, and peer support, and just to make sure all the, all the dots are, you know, I, the I's are dotted, T's are crossed, and everybody gets what they need. So we could preemptive, make sure the officers are healthy. Provide them time to either just take a moment if they need mental health, meditation, whatever they need, staffing appropriate. Responding to public's calls are our priority number one. But also making sure that officers are there to respond to you, making sure that they can, you know, we we need to adjust our attitudes on a moment's notice. Responded calls where you might think that one officer is that jerk, right? But you also know that your call, he might have just responded to an infant death. And then came now to your call, and he's trying to cope with that. Be friendly, but he's also now has to, you know, put that in that box. So I want to just provide that officer with that resource and the opportunity to talk about it. But anything else?
No, I mean, I would, I would just add to what Officer Hutchinson's already said, is that all of these things are designed to preemptively or proactively help the officers, so that they have a long, healthy career, but also that they come out of that career and have a long, healthy life after their career, which sadly, as many of you may be aware, there's still a significantly higher rate of suicide in law enforcement or first responders. It's more broad than just law enforcement. It's all first responders. But in particular to law enforcement, significantly higher than are killed in the line of duty. And that's why I got involved 14 years ago here with Gladstone, was I wanted to be an agent of change in my own community. And to mitigate upfront, to prevent and help our officers, and this is part of what the wellness program does. It's a holistic approach. It's looking at all aspects of a human being's life. And dealing with each of those in a way that then mitigates that incident and or incidents.
Open any question?
I'd just like to say thank you for what you do and in this program. And I recently got a chance to listen to Kevin Smith himself and and Brian Early speak. And I think that the officers not only need the mental, but the spiritual background on both those. And I think it helps. And I've talked to other officers, it's that it does, and they believe in that. So that's a great aspect, and you couldn't have two finer guys to do that.
You made kind of a joke, but I want to like get to the the kernel of truth behind the joke, where you mentioned staffing-appropriate breaks. So I know that staffing's been a challenge, but we've also had the pleasure of bringing in a lot of new officers recently. If you need time, if officers need time after challenging situations, do you have the ability to take time, the time that you need to heal and recuperate?
I would say most of the time we'll make time, but it just, if there's a really traumatic event where they, it's, we have to investigate, we have to be, you know, procedural in place. I mean, I would like to say yes, but then, you know, there are times where hopefully in the next, this summer, when we actually have everybody trained up, we have actually more than two people working every night. And yeah, that would be ideal, but there's times where we go call to call, we just kind of have to push forward and move through it. But I would say this department is definitely on the right, on the way up. Not that it's been bad, it's just staffing is the main issue. And I really like, you know, we're, we're doing well. We have some great people being brought on board. We have a lot of, you know, three guys in the oven right now, two laterals additional. We're gonna have a great SRO next year in in Robbie Teague. You know, I have nothing but optimism.
To to that question, is that this is one of the things that I can bring to bear as a, as a volunteer. I'm not paid by the city. This is what I get to contribute to my community, is I get to be in their office, the car. And I get to be their president, so that if they're not able to get away, I can be there in the car with them. We can be talking about, that we can be debriefing and talking about, okay, what are some healthy things we can do after this? What are some things you shouldn't do?
Council Riechel.
Hello. Hey, I guess maybe my question is kind of more of a general kind of progression of these programs and how they have evolved over time. And Chaplain, you said that you have been doing this for 14 years, but the peer support program sounds like this is fairly new as part of that process. I'm just kind of curious how that evolved. And also, like, I feel like there's stigma that we're breaking down in the general public as far as mental health and how we take care of ourselves and each other. I feel like the stigma is still kind of stronger with law enforcement and first responders, like we shouldn't break down, we're tougher than that, that kind of aspect. And I'm just kind of curious, what are you guys? Like, is this program just kind of a part of removing that stigma? Or do you feel like that's a particular challenge? I hope that makes sense.
It makes sense. Um, I think predominantly. Being ahead of the game on it where it's just. It's trying to see the signs before they become an issue. I mean, we have to have that sort of. I, you know, this bravado tough guy attitude because that's the nature of the job. You know, go to, go to conflicts, resolve them as quickly as possible, move on to the next, make sure, you know, nobody gets hurt. But it's just. It, it wears on any normal person. So being ahead of the game on that, being able to spot it, being having officers willing to. I don't want to say be vulnerable, but just be, to be able to, to talk to those that they trust. Um, I think we all trust Kevin. Uh, we all trust Brian as our other, other chaplain and then it just. Counseling available, uh, even other officers, you know, we have all, we're friends, but you know, you don't. Not everybody gets along with everybody. So you have to tailor it towards, you know, if they need somebody to talk to. I want to talk to him, I want to talk to him, you know, whatever that's, I'm, I'm there to facilitate that. Then they don't necessarily maybe want to talk to me because I have the stripes on my arm. That's fine. I don't take it personally. Just, you know. If they need a counselor, what's their name? I'm going to arrange that for you. You know, we'll just, we'll make that happen. So it's all internal that, I mean, they could still express that. That tough guy attitude out in the public like we're supposed to have, but internally, this is where we're going to resolve those issues. So they don't become more. There's no. You know, fortunately, we've never had to deal with officer involve suicides or anything like that. That's. You know, incredibly for our, incredible for our department. And I mean, any stressors, things like that, we, we do talk to each other. We have, you know. Talk to the guys, do you have any financial issues going on, things that could swell up more, you know, talk to, you know, marriage issues. I mean. That's, that's a big issue with a department like this and, you know, talking from personal experience. So it's just things that we go through and just making sure that you're able to talk to them. You have an outlet. Something, you can't let that box get full like I made the joke of this, the therapy box, it gets emptied, don't worry. But, um, you know, you just make sure that you're on top of it and make sure I'm there to help them get facilitated for that.
Yeah, as, as you mentioned that I've been doing this for fourteen years, it was. It's my, you're my fourth chief now. Uh, that I've been here, uh, and again grateful to get to do this. Yes. So when I first started, that, that was the beginning of. A cultural shift here in the United States, understanding that the. Suicide rate in first responders was out of control and especially in law enforcement. And there was now beginning to have more positive conversations. I served the United States Army. PTSD, things like that. It was there, but it was absolutely. Punitive almost. If you came forward and said, man, I'm struggling. Well, your career was over. Uh, this same attitude existed in first responder communities as well, especially law enforcement, law enforcement. So. More than fourteen years ago, that conversation was really coming together. That's when I got involved. That's where I personally had interactions with a lot of. Vets, friends of mine that were coming out of combat. And realizing I was not in a place in my life to go back into the military. How can I help a paramilitary organization, which is law enforcement? People that I care about, uh, men and women and in my community. So jumping into that, so that was the beginning of understanding what peer support could be. Peer support has grown tremendously that since then, to where we do have organizations like responder life. And others that are now helping departments, responder life, help us write an entire policy. And to put the program together, they were walking us through piece by piece and then training our officers. So that there's a program in which you can develop a confidential conversation. That is protected, not only with me as a chaplain, but that. Individual that's a recognized, according to the ORS, recognized confidential. Uh, resource, so that they don't have to come to a sergeant, a, a line officer doesn't have to come to the sergeant. They can access that without having to involve someone who is evaluating their performance. They can access. Uh, mental health resources, culturally competent. Counselors without having to go through a, a third party. And know that they're going to get help. So again, so they're hopefully mitigating those events one at a time rather than waiting till. The theory, therapy box, whereas we sometimes refer to it in the past as the cop stew. Boils over and into other areas of your life that now affects not only their performance, but their family life and their future. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it did. Thank you very much. I appreciate kind of that. That view. So thank you. And again, I'm very. I'm really happy that you guys have these resources and that. This is taken seriously because it is kind of an integral part of how you do your jobs. So. Thank you for everything that you're doing for our team.
Counselor Huckabee.
Thank you. Administrator Bets, you might. Have more insight on my question or not. Anybody can answer. Are these additional resource services to the PD? That complement I, what I assume the city's wellness program looks like?
That is correct. The city also has an employee assistance program. So there's additional resources on top of what's law enforcement specific.
Thank you.
Counsel Robert.
I don't have a question, just a statement here and that I've had an opportunity to interact with a lot of our law enforcement officers here in Gladstone. Um, and have a lot of really great personal conversations with them where they do truly feel supported within our department. And I think that this, these programs that were talked about are certainly in part. Relate directly to that and the leadership we have and our chaplaincy. So I just want to say thank you for coming this evening and. Really appreciate what you do in our organization.
Thank you. I just want to thank Counselor Rieckel for her question. You know, there, there's a real insight there and, and gave us a little. A deeper insight into the evolution of this process. And, uh, you know, we look at mental health and the crisis a- across the community, but knowing that your needs are different. That the amount of trauma that you see on a regular basis, uh, puts you in a different category when it comes to these things. And yet some of the same things that can be barriers to getting help in the regular community are cer- certainly could be barriers to you if you didn't have this. This recognition of the need and, and, uh, you know, the, a specific intentional focus. On, on the prevention and on the support that you need. So I'm grateful to the department for. You know, departments across the country for beginning to recognize the importance of this. And for providing the resources and doing it in the way that you are and to the city for, for backing you up on that. So. Thank you so much for informing us tonight. We appreciate the time you've given. I'm sorry we ended up to your vacation for a work session, but. Uh, it's, it is very helpful to us to have that firsthand information from you. Uh, and it helps us understand, uh, you know, and, and we deal with members of the community who may. Deal with you and have not have a good experience, one reason or another. We can see the bigger picture here. We see, we know what you're facing and why. Sometimes, as you said, you might respond to a situation after just having responded to something to put a big stress on you. And, uh, you're all human. You're trained to be superhuman, I know. But, uh, you know, uh, you need the same kind of support. Uh, uh, and, and deeper support than, than anyone would need. So, uh, thank you so much for coming and presenting tonight.
Thank you guys very much.
All right, we have one last item on our work session agenda. It is, uh, believe it or not, election season again. Uh, and, uh. None of us are running, uh, that's good, but, uh, we still need to know the rules. So. Administrator Bets.
Thank you, Mayor. That's a great segue. And honestly, the reason we put this in the packet is because we want people to be responsible. Campaigners this season. Believe it or not, Chief Schmerber and I. We get a lot of complaints during election season about signs. And so our intent tonight was not to. Change the, the rules or what our ordinance says. It's just to remind people about campaign signs. And so. Uh, Chief, you want to talk just a little bit about the difference between the public right of way and the private complaints that we get?
Yeah. So, uh, as I mentioned in the staff report and I'll just, uh, do an overview. Philosophy has been to remove political signs, any type of business signs that people just put in. The public right of way, which is, which is essentially your sidewalk to the street. Um, now Gladstone, that gets a little tricky sometime. You, you get on GIS maps, but when it's obvious. We're going to reinforce that and we remove those signs even on, uh, telephone poles, uh, according to our ordinance. Um, because we, our city can get inundated with signs. So when it comes to election time also, typically if they're under right of way. We'll either knock on the door and ask them to put them in their yard. Or if we don't get that responsible, remove them immediately, call the candidate. Tell them to come pick up their signs if they want them. Um, so we enforce that strictly. Now, with regards to private property, we typically go with complaint based. So. If, uh, especially during the political season, um, if, if you have, you're allowed up to two campaign signs. You know, your typical temporary signs, two campaign signs per, per property. Um, any more than that against the ordinance. So if you have more than two, you're violating the ordinance. And we've gotten complaints on those and have had to go and ask them to, you know, remove at least one of the signs. There's square footage that we see on the, on, on the ordinance also. So private property is a little bit different, more complaint based. Um, where public right of way, we're going to remove them because otherwise the city would be inundated with signs and it would just not look well. So it's more of a livability issue than anything else. So that's kind of our current stance on that and, and the way we're moving forward. Now I would only ask those who are running is. To follow the rules. Simply put, just follow the rules. It's simple. If we don't see something. The most common issue we face or complaint we get when we enforce this, well, this person down here has, has a sign. Or has two signs or three signs or puts them in a, in the right of way. We may not have seen it. But we're going to go check, but it doesn't absolve you from at the moment of violating the rule, if that makes sense. So that's our current philosophy and. It's opened up for discussion.
Well, it, it's hard sometimes for people to know whether they're in the public right of way or if it's on private property. And I know prior to Chief. Schmerber's tenure here, there was a time. Where I don't think the city did anything during election season. We just said, whatever you want to do, do. And we're still feeling that as we get complaints because it's like, well, why now are you enforcing it? You didn't that election cycle. So we just wanted to be clear and say, we're going to follow the code. And it's complaint driven on private property. And if we see something in the right of way, we're going to remove it. And you of, of all, uh, good stewards of information can share that with people that are campaigning. This is a general election. It's going to get nasty. And not everybody likes the candidates that are running. And so there's a tendency to say that, that shouldn't be there. Even though it's because maybe they don't like who's running. And so we're just trying to. Uh, equalize the playing field. So everybody knows that if we get a complaint. On a campaign sign, we will deal with it. You all know, we have a very, very proactive. Community services officer. And so really that was our intent tonight is to remind people about the municipal code. Campaign is coming in, but please just be responsible campaigners and we're happy to help with that information.
And if I can add one more thing, Jackie, um. You know, some of the streets, they don't have sidewalks and we're all aware. So it's, it's a guessing game as to what's the right of way, what's not the right of way. We're going to obviously give residents the benefit of the doubt. We're just not going to be, okay, we're going to get a GI. We, we don't go to GIS and, and look for mapping or look for lines. We give people the benefit of the doubt. Uh, you know, if you put it in the street, that's probably a problem. You know, but if it's on your grass that you mow and everything and you don't have sidewalks and it's. Back a bit, then, you know, we're going to give you the benefit of the doubt on that. So I don't want people to think that we're just. You know, we're doing our absolute very best and, and we'll continue to do that.
One question I had just for clarification, and we talked about public right of way. Uh, we're pretty clear what's, what's city of Gladstone public right of way, but I know we have. Uh, McLaughlin Highway named ninety-nine and I think even eighty-second drive, those are considered ODOT roads. Uh, and, and they may have their own rules or preferences regarding their right of way and your right of whether you can enforce in there. Can you say a little something about that?
Yeah, let's, let's use the example up by, um, eighty-second drive and Oakfield. There's, uh, there's that, that business complex up there. That actually is ODOT and ODOT property. So, so we see multiple signs up there from different candidates that we can't enforce. Um, so if the business gives permission to put them there, that we just can't enforce. If it gets too bad, we'll notify ODOT and, and make that, but. To your question, uh, Mr. Mayor, then yes, that's something we can enforce. If it's, if it's an ODOT road, ODOT right of way. And not city, then, then it's out of our jurisdiction.
One thing we might run up against, um, this year, we. Uh, a lot of residents, including some of us counselors have, uh. Gladstone, what is it? The school one right now?
Shows up, Gladstone shows up signs. Um, and then there's probably going to be election signs there. So how is that going to work?
So when you, when we look at Gladstone schools, we look at something, um. City sponsored or school sponsored, those are fine.
Okay.
Those are fine. We're, we're talking temporary election signs that clearly state that it'll only be out there a hundred and eighty days. Um, youth football, youth basketball, youth softball, you know, that's, that's, that's. That's creating community.
Yeah.
And we don't want to take that away.
I just assumed you'd probably get that question this year. So thank you.
I like that interpretation of that last thing. So thank you, Chief. Um, I had sort of a more nitty gritty question that I thought maybe we could just. Come to a consensus on. I've seen a lot of signs go back to back. So they didn't just print one person or two people on one sign, but it was two signs could join back to back. It's under the sixteen square foot, but is there an interpretation for that one? Cause then if they do two sets of back to back signs, that's effectively four people. For campaign.
Yeah, I've seen those also, and we go by the technical of if it's back to back. It's one sign.
Okay.
That's the way we enforce it because otherwise how, how would we determine otherwise in court? How would we, how would we say that that's not one sign? Just because it's two different people.
Yeah.
Right? It's still one sign. That's our interpretation.
Perfect. I didn't go one way or another on that, but I just kind of wanted a out in the public, clear, you know, definition of.
Because what, what it really does, what it really shows is there's only two signs in the yard. If they're back to back.
Effectively.
Yes.
Thank you.
It's been a while. So, pardon me. But I remember when I turned in, um, my campaign information to you. You know, you shared some information that was just like a simple city print, printout that it was on the website, you know, with basic campaign information. Um, and I don't recall if there was information about CM, you know, GMC codes around signs with that information, but. Would it maybe be helpful to provide that to any candidate who's filing with the city? We can't. Obviously that doesn't affect any other elections, but maybe it gives us a little bit of a leg up with local elections.
We do try and send that information out. So I can include that now. It is on the cover sheet. It talks about signage and we'll make sure that anyone that does. Campaign this year or it becomes a candidate that that information will be included as well. Yes.
And we're actually working on our process because I believe it opens up in July. So we're trying to get all the information ready on the city's website.
And, and this is just political sign, like to, to go to Counselor Roberts. If you go by my house. I've got one, one stick that says slow your roll. And the other one, it's got the snail thing. So they're back to back, but. Because sometimes too, people I noticed will get a sign that's only printed on one side. So they do back to backs like that. And then I've got the note goal. And I've got them measured with my tape measure and screwed them on my fan, you know, so, but yeah, if you just stay, stay within those parameters, it's. Should be, be easy this time.
Thank you for the clarification, particularly on the, the signs of more general community interest and, and, uh, you know, improvement. That distinguishing them from the political. Uh, so that's right. I say we're in the political season right now. Uh, but it'll, uh, and it's not, it's not Gladstone politics. It's, it's local to our county and, uh, state, but. It'll build up again, not too many weeks. So thanks for the update. Uh, I, that's all we have on the agenda tonight. Um, so, uh, this work session is, uh. Uh, adjourned at seven forty PM.